On behalf of Olympic Valley Firewise and the Fire and Palisades Tahoe and the Sheriff's Office and Public Service District and everybody else, a mutual water company. We had, if you remember, we had a town meeting in May of last year when my wife got COVID from sitting here. So we thought we'd try again and see if she could escape, not having COVID. But we wanted to. And I'll, I'm going to ask some questions at the end. In terms of what as residents of Olympic Valley, except for the spies from Alpine, what, what, what would you like to see in terms of social gathering or information or something? I mean, a lot of organizations like the Property Owners Association, that sort of fell apart. And the MAC is really hasn't met, I'm on the MAC, we've met like twice this year. So that's really not a a town meeting kind of forum. So the question would be, if people think about it over the course of this meeting, what kind of things would we like to see in the, for our community, the valley community? In terms of get to others, things maybe that resurrect what we used to do or whatever. But the comment has been made, at least to me, quite often is, you know, we just don't get together like we used to. Probably the, the event that has the most attendance where it's a community is breakfast. So maybe we should have a pancake breakfast semi Sunday or something like that. Anyway, think about that. All right. The subject of tonight is wildfire mitigation efforts. So we wanted to educate people in terms of the, the activities that the fire department is involved in. And so we have our old fire chief.
Or previous.
Another, another. Anyway, the efforts that are ongoing, I think the organization has come a long way. I think in probably three or four years from really not, not doing a lot of stuff, except for home inspections. We actually have contracts and we've employed people and we're start doing forest fire mitigation. So you'll hear about that. I mean, I think it's amazing what's actually been accomplished. And also some lessons that have been learned from the fire in Lahaina. And also the Calder Fire in terms of what we saw there. Okay, so the first speaker is our fire chief Brad Chisholm and off, off running.
Just tell me when you think the next slide and I'll click.
Is that yours?
Yeah, okay, that'll be a little. Well, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for taking some time out of your evening to join us here tonight. As Dave mentioned, my name is Brad Chisholm. I have the pleasure of serving as a fire chief of Olympic Valley. A lot of familiar faces, new faces as well. So it's good to be here with you all. Forgive me a little bit for, I'm going to be referencing my slides a lot. So I probably won't be as making eye contact as much as I'd like to, but that's kind of where we're at. As Dave mentioned, my agenda is going to cover what's up here. So we're going to start out talking about fuels reduction and the efforts that are going up in the valley, but then immediately adjacent to the valley and a little bit bigger picture as well. What wildfire preparation means, that's for you on an individual level. We'll take a look at these new terms that we've heard a lot about home hardening and what that means. And then we'll look at some of the communities that have been impacted by wildfire, kind of do some case studies on some of those. And my initial intention was to compare those to the profile of Olympic Valley. But there's so many different nuances and so many variables that it's hard to do that. So I'll just go through it a little bit differently, but we'll have a chance to do that. Then we'll talk about some of the influencing factors in fires and how they impact communities. And then the resources that are available for all of you. So it's really a regional effort. So the individuals involved are the Olympic Valley Fire Department and the Olympic Valley Public Service District, as well as a, all the local county, state and federal agencies, as well as local and regional organizations. So it's a collaboration of all those on a number of fronts that really make this able to happen. So I just want to also take a moment to introduce you to the team here, the Olympic Valley Fire Department, Olympic Valley Public Service Districts, that has really taken the lead here on the fuels mitigation efforts in the valley here. Who's not here tonight is Danielle Bradfield, and we contracted with her, she's a professional forester, to really help us walk through understanding how to mitigate some of these threats and address the, the issues that were identified in our CWPP. And I'll get to that in just a moment. But I'd like to identify those that are here as well. So Chris DeDeo, he's our cap, the defensible space prevention captain, he's in back. He's really led the charge the last few years in, as Dave Steffner said, really stepping up our defensible space program, really working individually with the, the members in the community and then engaging our staff to work with them as well. Mike Gere is not here, he's our general manager. We're kind of working under his direction as well as the direction of the board of directors.
Call him chief. Seems to be an audio problem. Can anyone remotely hear the speaker?
Yes, we can hear.
So whoever can hear, it's on your end, not on our.
Back up.
No, no, it's not you. People don't know how to use microphones and speakers. But I cannot solve that problem. So keep going, chief.
Okay. And then Jessica Asher, who's in back here, certainly want to point her out. Jessica, she's the fourth secretary, but she also has another role as a project manager. And that is a very significant role. She's done much of the heavy lifting in this whole thing, starting from the initiation of our CWPP and going through the OB projects, which we'll talk about here in a bit. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't point out Alan Riley's contribution to all this as well and his tenure as a fire deputy. I'm just kind of coming in and riding on the coattails of his work and hopefully I keep those coattails out there. Slide please.
Yeah, actually, just pull back a bit so you focus on the mic. That should be fine. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so I want to start kind of on a Mac, a micro level and then work out from here. So starting in the valley, so micro to macro. So really 25 plus years, the Olympic Valley Fire Department has had a very aggressive defensible space inspection program. So what we pride ourselves on is we inspect 100% of our residents annually, and that's really unprecedented for a fire department. And that doesn't just come from going out and doing inspection once and being good with it. Many times we have to do a second inspection and oftentimes a third inspection. So it really is a big effort and all those inspections are done by specifically our frontline firefighters in the fire department. We don't have a prevention division that does code, code enforcement and, and can run with all this. It's all done with our, our firefighters. We collaborate extensively with the organizations in the valley, the Firewise organizations, Friends of Olympic Valley, Palisades Tahoe, TTSC and the Olympic Valley Public Service Operations Department. We have incentives for the public that are listed there. Hopefully you all are familiar with these days. We have the chipper program. We have the green waste dumpster days, which is second Sunday of every month. Let next month will be the last month. And then free six yard dumpsters and then drop off. So a lot of incentives for the residents of the valley. You've probably also heard a lot about Zone Zero and home hardening. So we'll talk about those in a little, a little bit more here as well, but they are new to our defensible space approach, but a very important component to it. Can we wait, can we, if you don't mind, we'll just, if you, if you need to write them down or something, you're going to mess up my train of thought. So in, I mentioned our CWPP, that's our Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So that was adopted by our Board of Directors in November of 2022. Since then, we've secured nearly $700,000 in grant funding for the CWPP and for our fuels mitigation projects that are currently ongoing now or that are in the plans and permitting phase right now. We have contracted with a registered professional forester who I mentioned earlier, Danielle Bradfield. And then we have also, we've begun projects, two projects, OB one and OB three. I'll get into those in the next slide in a moment. And then we've initiated plans and permitting on OB four. There's also been a significant commitment of administrative and personnel time on behalf of pretty much those that I mentioned in the slide, kind of the teams that is running with this. Slide please. So here's just a recap of what was identified in our CWPP. So there's five main projects that identified threats to the valley and where we could make the most impact on addressing those. So we'll start with OB one. And OB one is 120 acres on the north ridge right up here. That is going to be, we're going to do what's called a shaded fuel break in that area. And that work is supposed to begin any day and last probably four to six weeks. There's OB, I'm going to jump to OB three, because that's the other one that we've actually taken action on. And that is to address the fuels buildup along the Olympic Valley Road, which identify as one of our main evacuation corridors. We did a portion of that last summer. And if the conditions in the meadow cooperate, we're hoping to get out there before this fall a little bit and do some more work on that area. OB four, the next one down there, you'll see it's kind of the whole perimeter that goes around the neighborhood and then kind of comes back and loops in around the resort Swale Creek. And that is 150 foot buffer that goes around the community. That's again, a shaded fuel break. OB two and OB five, so those are going to be down the road a little bit. There's prescribed burning between OB one and OB four for, for OB two there. And then OB five is a little bit of a thinning project on the south side of the, of the valley here as well. What I'll, what I'd like to point out here while we have the slide up is you see on the far top there, that, that yellow section. So that yellow section actually extends from the ridge here all the way up to the cold stream drain. It's just outside of Truckee. And so that's a very ambitious project that the Forest Service has identified called the Five Creeks Project. And that's supposed to start from the north in three phases, working south. So in 2024 during the northern third, the middle third in 2026, and then in 2024, the southern portion. So it's very effectively is going to tie into our OB one to create those connections. So that's kind of the macro to macro. And then the green section down there that you see as well, that's going to tie into our OB five and that kind of spills over into the Bear Creek drainage on the Alpine Meadow side. So again, you can see that those connections. Okay, so this gives me the opportunity to, to talk about our OB four community meeting that we're having on the 28th. So this is, we're, we're, the OB four is going to impact a lot of the residents because as you saw, it's kind of a ribbon that goes all the way around there. So we really want to give the community opportunity to hear what we have planned and then hear from the community on what their concerns are and their thoughts are. So we would love it if you would join us on the 28th. You could either join us here or you can join us remotely. And we'll have a lot of good information for you for that.
Are they going to record them?
Yeah, yeah.
Next slide.
Please. I thought there was another slide in there. Maybe I'm getting ahead. Okay, so.
Do you want me to go back?
So again, going, so that we were talking about the valley specific there, kind of the community. So now we're going to talk about more on the state level. So how we collaborate with CAL FIRE. So CAL FIRE is a big player in everything that we do, obviously. They are instrumental in outreach and education. They are very important in grant funding. Our OB one project was a CAL FIRE grant and we hope they view us timely when we go to FIPR grants on the OB four as well. They help with collaboration on local agencies. They have hand crews that are out and about doing thinning projects. And something else that they, they do is that our dispatch is all provided by CAL FIRE. We contract with them and they provide dispatch for all the agencies in this area as well as many on the, on the west loop as well. So it adds that element of coordination. CAL Trans, and I added this recently because there's, CAL Trans is a very important player, obviously, in evacuation corridors. They're responsible for more or less 150 feet from the center line out into the, you know, from the center line out. That does kind of vary with, you know, what Forest Service's jurisdiction as well. But for the most part, you know, a lot of the vegetation that you see along 89 here is CAL FIRE's responsibility. And only very recently, we were able to get together with them and convey to them the, the importance of them being involved in all these projects, being involved in the community, the state, the federal level. And so actually next week, the local fire chiefs here are meeting with representative of CAL FIRE to discuss thinning projects on Highway 89 here and Highway 267. So that's an exciting development for us. Next please. Okay, this is the map I was looking for. So this just kind of ties in everything. I just wanted to show you kind of where we are, a little bit of an older map, obviously refers to a Swale Creek there, but Bear Creek, you see that right below. That was the green slide that I was, the green in that previous slide that I was talking about, it connects that, goes up the entire Truckee River corridor up to Truckee there. And then really beyond that, this map is actually from an organization called the Middle Truckee River Watershed Fuels Project. And they are, that's essentially what it sounds like, the Middle Truckee River Watershed. So it goes up to Stampede and then comes back around the state line and the Sierra Crest. So this kind of encompasses a organization that is looking at the wildfire threat in this whole area and how to tie all these fuel breaks together. So think about that from a micro level, from your specific house, your backyard, to your, your street, to your neighborhood, to the valley itself, to what's going on to the north of us, the Five Creeks Project that's going on to the south of us and the Bear Creek, and then how it extends all the way up. So it's really a great example of, of how all these organizations can tie together. And then what's not even on here is called the Tahoe Fuel Breaks that extends around the whole Tahoe Basin. And they're doing the same thing, trying to coordinate and collaborate on all those fuel breaks. Okay, so some of the regional partners that aren't necessarily fire related or law related. So North Hollywood Community Alliance, Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, Firewise Communities, and then that organization that I mentioned before, the Middle Truckee River Watershed Fire Forestry Projects is what it is. All of those very instrumental, very active, very passionate about what they do. They all have health, right, education, outreach and support. They, some of those are responsible for distribution of grant funds. They participate in research, data analysis, project identification, prioritization, and then funding efforts that aren't necessarily related to grant funding. Okay, so let's bring this back and let's talk about what happens when a wildfire impacts the community. Okay, so it starts with being prepared. So, okay, so being prepared is easy as ready, set, go. Okay, and I've taken a lot of this just from what CAL FIRE has put out there and they've tried to simplify it down and make it simple, easy for all of us to understand. So ready, set, go. So next slide. So being ready starts with defensible space. Okay, and being ready is obviously the biggest, big, big one. So we've broken it down into different zones. So we'll start with Zone Zero. Again, this is a product, this is a new one, but you've probably been hearing a lot about it. It's called the Ember Resistance Zone. And keep that, that word in mind, ember, because ember is a big player in why homes are lost during wildfires. So that's zero to six, zero to five feet. Why is that important? Research has shown that 60 to 90% of homes lost in wildfires are due to embers. It's not necessarily direct flame contact or radiant heat, it's because of embers. So what to do? If you have the opportunity, if you're doing some remodeling, if you're doing, getting some landscaping, use hardscape, gravel, concrete or brick. Remove dead or dying vegetation in that five feet. Remove all branches within 10 feet of the chimney, limit combustible items, sorry, limit combustible items. So deck furniture, wood planters. And if you can't, you know, if you want them there for your aesthetics or use, then identify those, you know, have them so they can be easily moved if a wildfire doesn't come and you can move those out into Zone Two, which we'll talk about here in a moment. Again, and then move all wood or lumber to Zone Two, and that's 30 feet or further out. And then this is a big one, non-combustible fencing and gates. And I know in Olympic Valley, we don't have a lot of fencing, which is great, you know, so kids and wildlife can all roam between. But those that do have fencing, consider it as a type of wick. Say that the, your fence, wildfire encroaches and ignites your fence on the far side. And it might go out, but it's going to follow your fence all the way around until it reaches your house. Chief Riley and I were on the Angora Fire and probably half of what we did down there, we were on the initial attack down there, was cut up fences to stop those, the fences from leading fire back to the houses. So what, what's being recommended is you can still have a nice wooden fence, but that last five feet should be some type of non-combustible material. Next please. Did I get it? Nope. There it is. Okay, and now we move out to Zone One. So this is from five feet out to 30 feet out. This is called the lean, green, lean cleaning green zone. Remove vertical and horizontal continuity of fuel. So think about it so the fire can't travel laterally and it can't travel vertically. We're trying to break that up. So when you're doing your defensible space or we come out and inspect things, we're really looking for just creating little islands that aren't connected to the next island and the next island, so it can be a continual fuel bed to your house. We want to, so if one, one island does ignite and become involved, that it just stays isolated to that island. What to do? Again, remove all dead, all dead vegetation. This includes grasses, weeds, leaves, pine needles and trim trees regularly. So not just trees, but the other vegetation. So if we come out and do the pencil space inspection, you know, earlier on in the summer or if you do your clearing early on, you might have to do it again. Okay, especially with mule's ears or things that are going to grow back. So keep those in mind. So, but as it refers to here, keep branches limbed up six feet, keep the branches 10 feet from other trees, again, creating those pockets, those islands. And then create a separation between the vegetation and the household items. So if you have a tree that's overhanging your deck and you've got ground vegetation that leads up to the tree, we want to try to break up that continuity. Okay, so Zone Two. So this is where we talked about moving your, your firewood or lumber or if you have to move your house, you know, your deck furniture. And this is 30 to 100 feet out or the property line, whichever comes first. Why? So this is to reduce the intensity of a fire that comes in and then creating the intensity from, from property to property to property. And it's also, this, this Zone Two is required by, it's a public resource code 4291. So this is where they are incented for us to engage in some of this stuff. Know what to do again, trim grasses, weeds down to four feet, create horizontal and vertical space between the trees and the shrubs, remove fallen leaves, needles, twigs, cones and branches, 10 feet clearance around the wood piles. And why that's important, because if a wood pile gets going, there's a lot of BTUs that are involved in that. If we have to go there and spend some time on that, putting, mitigating that, it's going to take away from us being able to bump along with the fire and take, and address those. So it's a nice sound of mineral soil 10 feet around from the, from the wood pile as well as from your propane tank. Okay, so that's ready. So now we're into set, ready, set, go. So we're into set. Okay, so set is essentially three items, so three steps completed and familiar with all family members. Okay, so the first one is assemble a go bag for each member of your household. You've all probably heard the term a go bag. So what's in your go bag is up to you, but some important things would be, so important documents, medications, maybe a computer or an external hard drive, things like that that you know you're going to need to stay on your feet if you need to, to leave your house for extended period of time or if you have unfortunately something to not return to. And then create a wildfire action plan for your home or home, family and pets. Who's going to do what? Where are you going to meet? You know, who's going to check on the pets? Who's going to check on the neighbor, the neighbors or who's going to check on the in-laws or that thing? Just figure out what your plan is, what, what identify, you know, routes out, multiple routes out, because you'd never know which direction a fire might be coming from. So just figure out your plan and then have a communications plan. And this is a big one, and it should be an alternative to just using your cell phones because there's a chance that communication might be down. So say, okay, we're going to meet at so-and-so's house in Reno or we're going to be at so-and-so's house in Sierra Belle. Start a pre, pre-establish those, whether it's in-laws, friends, let, let them know, hey, if something happens here, can we stay with you for, you know, whatever that extended period of time? And you can reciprocate by offering them the same if they're in a potential area as well. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, and ready, set, go. So go means go. It doesn't mean wait around, should we consider, should we not? What are the neighbors doing? What are we going to do? It means go. So review your evacuation plan checklist, have this all, all laid out for you. Ensure your go bag is in your vehicle. Okay, so that's a big one. You put all this work into having your go bag, you're scattered, you got the dog, you have the kids, you take off and you've forgotten your go bag. So make sure that is part of your plan. So have it on your checklist, your go bag is in your vehicle. And then be prepared to protect yourself against the possibility of heat and embers. You know, we've all seen videos of people trying to flee and their, the roads are congested and they're exposed to some heat elements. So long pants, long sleeves, shirts, heavy footwear, a hat, a dry bandana, and then some type of eye protection. Locate your pets and G O, go. Okay, next slide. Okay, so we're going to get back to what we talked about, the home hardening. So again, home hardening and the Zone Zero thing, it's a, you know, what we, what we've been hearing a lot about. So during a wildfire, homes can be threatened by wind blown embers, radiant heat and direct flame contact. We talked about those a little earlier and the biggest one, 69% of homes are lost due to embers. So home hardening is essentially using ignition resistant materials on and around your home to help withstand flying embers and radiant heat. Again, the 69%. There's a lot of websites out there, they're referenced at the end here, home hardening materials, ideas, thoughts. It's on our radar. We are not inspecting for home hardening right now. It's not a mandate, it's not a law, but we are more than willing and happy to talk to you about what that means. There are grants out there for home hardensings. We're talking with the Firewise community about trying to figure out how to secure some of those grants. We're pretty much consumed with our OB projects we've mentioned already. So it's a, it's, it's a, it's new, it's big, it's important, it's on our radar and, but it's not something we're able to act on right now. But on an individual level, if you're going to be doing any upgrades or changes or anything like that, look at the home hardening websites and see what you can do to make those changes. Or if you're just curious, some of the changes are pretty easy to address as well. Next please. This is a visual guide to home hardening, like where the points are in your house that are suspect, are susceptible to home hardening. So I push that pointer, but essentially you're all talk about this.
Use your speaker.
So here's your Zone Zero, all the way around, so that car is rattled. This is, you know, for an address, make sure your address is very visible, make sure your fence, again, it's a non-combustible material siding, if you're going to be doing some type of, your siding's old and you want to do, be really proactive, there's types of sidings that are much less susceptible to fire than.
Jessica, this one? Always prepared.
You know, windows, if you've got an older house with single pane windows and you want to upgrade, you can go to double pane windows, make sure your gutters are clear of any debris. If you've got a saddle in your house, same thing, make sure there's no pine needles that have accumulated in there. Make sure your chimney has a screen on it. Not sure what that one is. Make sure your deck is, well, not make sure, but if you're going to be doing a deck remodel or something like that, you can use a more ember resistant type of material there. And then if you have a water source, you can identify that, you know, if it's just a hose or something that's in there. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to kind of move into some case studies. And these are the three fires that I, I thought were appropriate. Angora Fire and Camp Fire are similar environments to where we are, but then I included Lahaina just because it's recent and it's been news a lot and there's some, you know, interesting news that came out of that. So, slide please. So we'll start with the Angora Fire. So this was in June of 2007. It started at 2:50, 2:15 in the afternoon. There were 242 structures that were destroyed. It burned 3,100 acres. So not a really big fire, but where it did burn was impactful, obviously. It had a significant west wind that started up by a lake and there was some heavy timbers between the ignition point and the community. There was a mix, the neighborhood, kind of this middle upper Truckee area, the Mount Rainier Circle area, it's a mix of working class and second home. So many of them were unoccupied at the time, fortunately. I did have a conversation with the Lake I did have a conversation with the Lake Valley Fire Chief, who's there currently, and asked him what type of evacuation measures they took, because it happened really fast. It was like one of those things where you've got to be ready to go right now. And they used a notification system that is no longer used. Nevada, El Dorado County is using an upgraded approach now. But he said their sheriffs went around and their fire fire departments went around and essentially got on their PA system, going up and down the streets, advising people to evacuate. And he said that was, at the time, was perhaps the most effective. A lot of things have changed, and we'll be talking about that a little later on in this meeting. Significant fuel between the origin and the community residents, like I talked about, some really heavy, big timbers, congested continuity the entire way. The initial resources were from the basin, and there was that initial first wave that got there pretty quickly. There was a little bit of a delay from that second wave that came from kind of the Truckee Meadows, Reno Carson area, and then the west side. There was two means of egress there. One was more or less, kind of depending where your house was, but more or less towards the fire, and the other was away from the fire. So one was towards Highway fifty, and the other was more towards the Y. So one thing to keep in mind on this is significant west wind. And just keep that in mind as we go through these slides. Okay, next one is the Campfire. So this was in November two thousand and eighteen. At the time, it was the most it was, it was the biggest fatality fire in in recent California history, shall I say. Eighteen thousand structures destroyed, eighty thousand people evacuated. So obviously, a much bigger footprint than what we're, what we have in the valley here. Eighteen thousand structures, eighty thousand people. This one's interesting, because the first report came, it's, you know, six in the morning. So Angora was in the afternoon. This one was at six in the morning. What Paradise had, which led to a lot of the complications, the challenges of evacuation, it's got a very complex street network. A lot of arteries, secondary, tertiary streets that lead into the next street, that lead into the next street, that lead into the next street, that lead into one. But that caused a lot of the congestion and challenges getting out. It had a significant east wind on it. So look at the date, November. So this is pretty far into the fall and early winter. So this is when we get those north winds. I mean, that's kind of what they had, northern east wind, fifty mile an hour wind on it. It also had a significant drought. So they're used to getting five inches a year. That year, they were at just over half an inch that year. This was also the same day, same time period as the Woolsey Fire and the Hill Fire in Southern California. So a lot of resources were already pulled out of the area and kind of started the stage down, down south. The repeaters and cell towers were quickly compromised in this event. There was also a very limited number of dispatchers. They were overwhelmed almost immediately. Because of the wind, fifty mile an hour wind, aircraft, initial aircraft was unable to fly. And then there was, the cause of this was a electrical transmission line failure. And I should have mentioned the origin of the Angora Fire was a a campfire that was left unattended at Angora Lake. Next slide. And then Lahaina. So Lahaina is, you know, it's probably on everybody's radar. You're probably familiar with most of these things here. It had experienced a severe drought over the last few years. The big one here is an abandoned, overgrown crop that has been invaded by very aggressive, very fast-growing weeds. We call these light flashy fuels. A lot of the research I did said these found the views were three to four feet high. Pretty much completely brown, dead, and very much just ready, called a receptive fuel bed. And so that's really all it took. It was a hurricane-influenced wind that was on this, up to sixty-five miles an hour, which is very significant. Again, aircraft were limited due to the winds. They had multiple simultaneous fires on Maui that day. You might have just heard of this fire, but there were three others that were happening at the same time. So those fire crews were trying to get this wrapped up and get it contained and get a line around it, and then they were going to like rehab and then bump off to the other fires that were demanding their attention as well. The time sequence is interesting in this. The first report came in at six thirty AM as a three-acre fire, and they're attributing that to a downed power line. So the crews went out there and cut a line around it, did some suppression on it, and sat on it for a while to make sure it didn't go anywhere. Maui Electric showed up and they took, they came in and they were going to do some line work on there. And at nine AM, the fire department declared a contain. They went back to their stations to rehab and get ready to roll out to some other fires that were going on in there. And then by three AM, it was up, sorry, three PM, it was up to a thousand acres. It had that wind behind it. It was into those light flashy fuels, and there was nothing stopping it at this point. One of the big lessons learned out of this and why it's going to be important to hear from our water purveyors here is that the loss of power in Maui resulted in any source of water being being available. So they've got a different type of water supply system there. I'm not going to get into that. I'll let the gentleman here who's speaking in a moment talk about this. But that loss of power, not only did it impact the communications, but it lost, impacted the pumps which were able to, which were intended to supply the water. Twenty-seven hundred structures destroyed, so obviously, again, a little bit bigger impact than what we're talking about here. So, next slide, please. So let's talk about the through line on this. Okay, so the through line, you're probably gathering are things like wind, and that is a big one. It's also the fuels. And when these things come into alignment on the bottom there, it's really hard to stop these things. And it used to say three things that came into alignment to create the fire intensity, and that's weather, topography, and fuel. But what's interesting about Lahaina, and what was interesting about the Angora Fire, and to an extent, the Campfire, is they didn't need that topography. It didn't have to run uphill for it to become an aggressive fire. Those burnt downhill. But it had a significant wind on it, and it had a very receptive fuel bed that had been dried for years because of drought. Requirements for a fire fuel, oxygen, and the heat source, they all have those. Some of them were different. Lahaina's fuel was different than the Campfire and Angora. Whatever the heat source, ignition source was, is what it is. All three of those were human-caused. Obviously, and oxygen is part of it as well, which is everywhere. So, usually, like I said, usually, we need those three things to have a really intense fire. But with our prolonged droughts that we're experiencing, and even though we had a significant winter last year, it does not mean we're out of drought if you look at the fuel moisture contents. We look at fuels in different time periods and how long it takes them to start to adjust compared to the the rest, the the water around them or the HR around them. So some of them can be a ten-hour fuel, a hundred-hour fuel, and ten-thousand-hour fuel. So a ten-thousand-hour fuel, for example, it takes it that long for it to adjust from a dry state to a warm, a wet, a more moist state if it's been exposed to water or higher relative humidity or things like that. So again, even though we've had a significant winter, one is not going to be enough. We're going to need multiple of those to turn things around. And obviously, we've lost a lot of vegetation that has had a lot of standing dead as a result of those few years that we've experienced those droughts. So because of the droughts, really, all you need is weather and a receptive fuel bed, and anything can happen. Next slide. So let's look at Olympic Valley, and we'll talk about what our risks are and our strengths are. So this is a really impressive fire picture of the King Fire. This was on the El Dorado National Forest down around Hellhole Reservoir. This was in September of two thousand and fourteen, and it burned ninety-seven hundred acres. This was a really interesting fire in that it was an eye-opener. There was one night where this fire came into alignment, and I don't remember what the exact numbers are, but the fire intensity and fire behavior at night, usually fires tend to lay down at night, the humidities come up, and things give the crews a little time to reprieve. This made it an incredibly aggressive run up a drainage in the middle of the night, and crews on the head of this thing were were spamming to get out of the way. Chris, I don't remember, were you on this fire? Yeah, so it was an impressive, it wasn't even a firefight. It's one of those times where in the fire service, we have the saying, like, get out of the way and let the big dog eat. It was one of those times where you just like get all your crews out of the way, and this thing is going. And the the interesting part was that it was in the middle of the night. The other thing that really came onto our radar with this was we've always felt a little comfortable in the valley here, because, you know, most of our winds come out of the west, and to our west, we do have significant granite. You know, the vegetation is a little more sparse, so we're thinking, oh, you know, if the fire does establish itself in one of these American River drainages doesn't come up, it's going to kind of hit that granite, the thin fuels, and it's not really going to be able to sustain itself. I remember on this fire, I was picking my kids up at Alder Creek Middle School, and I'm sitting in my car, and an ember the size of a hockey puck lands on my hood. So that's where it came from. And granted, it was light as a feather, and it was cold, but when it gets up into these upper elevations, it can travel who knows how far, and if it's got some heat to it. So, you know, just having granite on that side isn't going to protect us, because we've got things, you know, we get things that spot a mile, two miles, three miles ahead now. Okay. So let's look at the risks and strengths of Olympic Valley. So some of the risks. So like the Angora Fire and the Campfire, they had a significant timber between the origin and those communities. We've got timber stands that surround a lot of our, a lot of our residential areas, south side, the north side. And even on the west side, you know, once we get out of that granite area, you know, once we're on the east side of Squaw Creek there, we get into some heavier vegetation, some heavier fuels. We've been exposed to long-term drought. You just have to look around, you can see that, and there's no secret there. Another risk is we have backcountry recreation, obviously Shirley Canyon. When we talked about the Campfire, the Angora Fire, and the Lahaina Fire, all those were human-caused. So it's a concern, and what's going on in Shirley Canyon. We also have Pole Creek Drainage, which sees a bit of recreation right on the other side here. And then the Western States Trail, both on the east side and the west side of the Truckee River, sees significant recreation as well. So something to be aware of. We have overhead power lines in the valley here. They're not as necessarily exposed as the power lines that are in, that were in Lahaina and the Campfire. Those were, those were exposed, those were dated. But obviously, we do have a lot of overhead power lines. Power lines are intended to, if they come down, they have breakers at every few poles that it automatically shuts off the power. That's the intention. It doesn't always happen. Majority of the time, it does happen, but it's not a foolproof system. The other risk that we have is we have one mean of egress, so the Valley Road out to eighty-nine. So you know, anytime you have just one means of egress, you know, that's a little bit of a red flag. We also have a significant visitor population. So why is that a risk? Well, because they're just not, they're not aware. They don't know how to, you know, if they did have to evacuate, they would maybe not know, you know, the various different routes they can take to get out. And then the last one, again, talking about winds. You all know, you stand up like by the Meadows condo or in the parking lot of Palisades in the afternoon, you've got some significant down canyon winds going. So that's one thing that we share with those other fires that may happen. But let's look at what the, some of our strengths are. So just like you all being here, we've got significant community engagement. We've got meetings, we've got interactions, mailers, websites. Getting the word out, getting all you to collaborate, talking to neighbors, talking to other people, that's really important. That's really important for a set. We do have significant granite and limited vegetation to the west, so that's going to, for the most part, take any, the intensity out of any fuel, any fire that's coming up on the ground. But like we talked about, spotting is still an issue. We do have really good emergency access to residential areas, even though it might seem like it, not seem like it, and that's for fire and law. When you compare to Campfire that had these small arteries that kept getting smaller and smaller, back into dirt roads. You had branches essentially touching each other, hanging over the roads, hard, you know, hard clearances. For the most part, you know, we might say, oh, you know, Sandy is pretty narrow, this, that, but when you look at a lot of other communities, it's pretty good. And the nice thing about it is I'll wait and look it down at one time today. Oh, I guess it's next one. Most residential streets have multiple means of egress, so you can go out a couple ways. Sure, we've got some dead ends, you know, you've got you know, places back in here where cul-de-sacs, but you know, some of the main, bigger residential areas have multiple ways out. And one very advantageous point for us is we do have a very effective TRA. It's a temporary refuge area, and that is the Palisades Parking Lot. We don't want that to be the primary default. You know, we want to, when you get the notice to go, we want you to get in your car and head out and head out. But if something happens, if the fire comes from the, from the north or the east, that is a very significant, very appropriate temporary refuge area. Minimal arteries to main egress route. So what I mean by this is like, again, talking about the Campfire. Dozens of little roads leading into another one, leading into another, into another one. We don't necessarily have that here. We've got maybe two or three that might lead into one to the other before you get to the main road. So that's really nice to be on. And then our proximity to Highway eighty-nine, where Olympic Valley Road meets Highway eighty-nine, going north, it's wide. They can convert that into two or three lanes or four lanes going northbound. When you get between here and Tahoe City, much narrower, a little more tricky to do that. So it's going to be much, much more advantageous for those of us coming out of Olympic Valley to get onto eighty-nine and make their way into Truckee. We have, as I mentioned before, we have a common dispatch center, the CAL FIRE, that dispatches all the resources in here. They also sit side by side with the Forest Service, and they dispatch all the aerial resources. So it really is one encompassing dispatch center under one roof that's really well-coordinated. We're also, for better or for worse, we're getting more and more burn scars in the American River Drainage on the west side. So the mosquito fire being the most recent of those, the King Fire that we talked about. So one thing that was, was realized, the, well, I won't go there, but essentially, those fuel, those are kind of those fuel breaks that are happening, whether they're naturally happening or from man-made fires, but they are very significant. They're going to take the intensity out of those fires to be able to really get some momentum behind them. So, and then we've got some great notification means. So we're very well-coordinated, and that'll be talked about here a little bit later, whether it's versed through an app or through the sheriffs just going around and using their sirens to advise people. And then the other, the last one I put down here is Alert Tahoe Cameras. So there's a very extensive, elaborate camera system that's placed all over, the cameras are placed in strategic locations, mountain peaks all over California, and now it's moving into Oregon and Nevada. And you can just log on there and you can see what's going on. And that's not necessarily for you all. It's accessible for you all. But what's nice is to, if somebody gets a report, the officials can log on and see those and get an idea of what it is they're looking at and say, and then they can adjust their dispatches and their responses accordingly. So instead of like saying, oh, we'll send a patrol out to check on it, you know, this lightning strike, they can jump on this camera and say, oh, there's a good call in there. It's building, and you know, it's on a slope, and it's got potential to go to X acres. So, and they can send the resources accordingly. So those are kind of the, the differences and the commonalities behind the three other fires that I mentioned, and then what we have in Olympic Valley here. There are some through lines. There are some similarities to be aware of and be concerned about. And, you know, as a fire department and as a public service district, we are, they're very much on our radar. We're working hard to address these. Like talking about going from micro level from your backyard all the way to Lake Tahoe Basin and that middle Truckee River watershed is a significant approach. I think everybody that's involved in it is very excited and very proud of the direction that we're headed. So, you know, I don't want anybody just to relax and say we don't have anything to worry about here, because we certainly do. But you know, as a community, if we continue to move forward and take it seriously, you know, I think we'll stand a good chance should something come our way. This meeting, I believe, is being, it's going to be recorded or aired. So if I just put all these in there, these are just websites that you can go to. There's dozens and dozens of them out there. I kind of went through and tried to find the most significant ones. So feel free to go to any of these and get some great information, share these with your friends and family and neighbors. I don't know if we want to go through the whole meeting before we take questions or
Anybody having questions now?
How close was that Hell Creek to whenever it was coming this way, and you could almost see it on an ember?
Hellhole, the hellhole? No, no, no. As the crow flies, I mean, to the basin, it was probably only like maybe three miles. To, you know, to the valley here is a little bit further, because it was a little further to the southwest, but I don't know if Alan or Chris have a better idea how far away it was?
The area above us is number two.
Yeah, from the valley. And like directly to the crest or to the valley?
I think direct up to
Okay, so Okay, so.
It traveled eight miles that night. Do you remember that?
Yeah, it was a big run.
Uh, there's a question online. Will there be an evacuation drill coming up?
So the reason actually why we're here is because annually, we used to do an evacuation gathering uh, pal, with Palisades, and we just thought it would be a good opportunity to, for fire wise, to try to reach a broader audience and do a hybrid meeting. Um, we are, I was just at a regional chiefs meeting today. Two weeks ago, we had a regional chiefs meeting that was specific to evacuation. Um, so we're all trying to work with fire and law enforcement on really putting together a comprehensive evacuation approach. Um, it's tricky. I don't want to get into too much because Lieutenant Nevins is going to address the evacuation part of it. But as far as a drill, what we're planning on doing is Incline just had one. Um, and we're going to divide the basin into four parts and each year we're going to um, have a evacuation drill in one of those quadrants.
You know, ninety percent of the uh, homes being lost to embers, the holes in zero thing. How do you move from kind of a passive inspection to a more engaging enforcement action?
Well, so that's going to take the teeth of the state. So what we're doing is, so Zone Zero right now is just something that's been identified. The state is looking at implementing that as in law in, we've heard two thousand twenty-five, but maybe one or two years out. So what we're doing right now, they're leaving it up to the jurisdiction to figure out what approach they want to take. Captain DeDeo has led the crews and what we're doing now is we are identifying these.
Push down the top.
We can't enforce them, but we're identifying them or we're working with those properties that are interested in doing stuff. We'll show them on the, our programs, our central space programs that we're using, what they, what they can do. Um, there's got, they got resources, they have pictures and things on there that they can use. What we can do at this point is not, uh, they, they kind of leave it up to us if we want to enforce it or not, but we're not, we're not there yet. We're waiting until the state puts it into law. But the state also realizes that it is a big, it's going to be a big transition because it's going to be costly. Um, so they're trying to get the word out now. So incrementally, people can take steps to be a little more prepared when that goes into law.
A question from the audience. What is the current alert system for the valley?
So I'm going to leave that up to Lieutenant Nevins, who's going to talk about the evacuation. Um, yeah. You have one question and make it brief.
Okay, so my name is Barbara Mavco and I've been looking at these maps ever since they came out. I've known about the fire road, but it looks like the area above us is the number two section. And it's, even though it's number two, I assumed it would be done after number one or at least done with the other number twos. But it seems like even though it's number two, it's being left to be one of the very last places to be um, uh, cleared. Is that true?
Yeah. And what was your name? Barbara?
Yes, my name is Barbara Mavco.
Okay. So yeah, Barbara, that's a very astute uh, uh, comment there. So these are, they're numbered, but those numbers are not sequential. So what we identified was not only the importance of the project, but how likely we could move on that project and how likely it could get funded and get completed. Um, and we recognized uh, OB one as being the project that we could implement and get funded and completed uh, more quickly than any others. And because it was our first one, we wanted to have that success. Um, and then the, the one that we identified as being critical, but yet still uh, run a high chance of being funded was that OB four, which is that perimeter around the valley. Um, that's not to dismiss OB two or OB four, which are important. But we figured though, if we can tie OB one into the Five Creeks project and then get a barrier around the valley, those are the two most important. And then down the road, once we get OB one and OB four in place, we can act on OB two because that's going to involve some potential um, controlled burning. And we wanted to make sure that we had that buffer around the community in place and the thinning project on the hill in place before we uh, implemented any types of burning.
Okay, I was under the impression that the northern part would be.
Okay, Barbara, we don't have all night for your questions.
Well, I don't care. I lived longer than you.
My dad's a bigger dad.
Ask her to contact the chief.
Yeah, why don't you contact the chief of, of, of line?
Thank you.
Otherwise we'll be here till tomorrow.
So uh, in, in our uh, properties, there are many trees that have branches to touch. Uh, not only our own, but our neighbors and so forth. It's pretty expensive to take down trees. A, is there any thing you can suggest? And not just remove branches as, as a way to keep them continuing without the whole tree? What's a cost-effective way of doing that for home owners?
Yeah, I know in one of those slides that said, keep branches ten feet apart and a community like ours, that's really tough. What I can suggest is that if you can't break up that horizontal continuity, break up the vertical. So just make sure those trees are limbed. If it's a mature tree, it's limbed up six feet. If it's immature tree, it's a third the height of it. And just make sure those ground, those ground fuels are cleared out so you don't get any creeping ground fire that can make its way up into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Um, a couple of comments. If you want a great example of home hardening transition, go see the Valley View condominiums. What they did in the last several years with the siding and the roof, embers could fall on that and would not burn. That, I think that's probably the best example of home hardening transition that we've had in the valley. Um, number one. Number two, if you go through the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, uh, not only was the forest around us identified as a hazard, but our own homes were identified as a hazard. In fact, our own homes are identified as the principal hazard. Um, they're all, they're old. They have roofs that'll burn. They have wood sidings. A lot of people store wood under their eaves. That's, that's Zone Zero. Um, and if you listen to the news today, there's, there's talk about the, what's going to happen with the fire insurance. And I would predict that in a couple of years, if you want your fire insurance to go down, you're going to have to demonstrate that you have, you have hardened your home and you have the defensible space around your house. And defensible space for our, our quarter acre lots is like one tree. I mean, it's, it's going to be a dramatic change. Okay, so the next speaker and, and guys, we're an hour in and I thought everything there was very, very valuable, but we'll try to move along. Um, this is Lieutenant Don Nevins. He's with the Placer County Sheriff's Office. He is the commander, so proper respect, everybody. He is the commander of the North Tahoe Station. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me. I'm uh, super pleased to be here. And uh, I really applaud your efforts and the chief's efforts to keep you prepared.
Can he turn the mic up?
There is no mic. There is no mic. It's just, I have to turn me up.
Now that's still going to make a difference because that's for the remote. Oh, local here is just him. Oh, that's hard to complain about, yeah.
I'm known for speaking really loudly, so I will do my best to speak up. Can we go to the next slide? So obviously wildfires and evacuations, this has been one of the top community concerns. It's driving a lot of the work we do and the training we do and the preparation we do. It's not, we understand the hazard. We understand the concern of the community. We understand the concern that traffic congestion during peak hours up here creates for the community. So just so uh, kind of educational side, the evacuation authorities, according to the penal code in the state of California, basically the law enforcement is vested with the authority to conduct evacuations. Basically that just means the sheriff in our area is the one who decides whether it's going to be a mandatory evacuation or warning, but that's always done in conjunction with our partners on the fire side. Uh, because we really only work these things in what's called unified command. We work as a team, we work as partners, uh, but the authority to evacuate, the responsibility to conduct evacuations rests in Placer County here, unincorporated Placer, with the sheriff. It's also in our twenty fifteen updated Placer operational area east side emergency evacuation plan. So we're getting a lot of experience. Unfortunately, doing evacuations in Placer County, we had the mosquito fire last year. Uh, we lost seventy-six thousand acres in the sheriff's office and our allied agency partners evacuated eleven thousand people. We also had the river fire down in Colfax the year before. We evacuated sixty-six hundred people during that fire. So, something to bear in mind, that we never work on anything like this by ourselves. We are always working with our partners. So obviously our station here with the sheriffs, we're a twenty-four seven operation. We're on duty, but we're not the only ones on duty in the basin. So we have, we work very closely with our partners at CHP. And uh, we also have the rest of the sheriff's office on the western slopes where we can tap into significant resources very quickly. We also have Truckee Police Department of Washoe County, El Dorado County, Nevada County. All of them, we maintain very close working relationships. Uh, when it comes to tapping in the manpower, the highway control alone, we expect in, in our conversations with them that we could have a hundred CHP officers up here within an hour for Code Three One. That's a lot of resources that we're able to tap. Uh, the sheriff's office itself, we run about two hundred and fifty sworn deputies and we can get many of them on the way in the Code Three One and have them up here very quick. So, like I said, this has been one of our primary focuses. We know it's the, one of the primary concerns of the community. And we've been working very hard at this. At July nineteenth, right here in Olympic Valley at Palisades Tahoe, we conducted our Unified Command Training. Uh, that was CAL FIRE, Placer Office of Emergency Services, our local allied agency partners and fire. We also had CHP there. We had Washoe County there. We had Truckee PD there. We had Nevada County. They all participated with us in what's called Unified Command. This is basically where, at the beginning of an emergency, when we first become alerted to it, we just go call the car. It'll be an Olympic Valley Fire Chief's car or one of his uh, lieutenants. And it'll be one of my sergeants or myself. And we just go to car to car and we start addressing the emergency. What needs to be done? Who do we need to evacuate first? Where are we deploying the resources we have? During this training, as a matter of fact, not only was it held here in Olympic Valley, but one of our scenarios was a fire, a wildland fire in Olympic Valley that was beginning over near the uh, Everly. Thank you, Everly. I keep wanting to go back to the resort at Squaw Creek. It's that Everly. Yeah, that tips me up. I'm going to be doing that for the rest of my career, but I'm going to keep trying to work that. Um, so that was one of the things. That was an all-day, eight-hour training session with a specific fire scenario we worked through. And uh, I can talk a little bit about more about that as we move on. So as the chief alluded to, you know, a lot of the responsibility rests with you. You just need to be prepared. That's the first step. You know, your emergency services partners, either on the law side or the fire side, we are working every day to do our part to make sure you're safe. The state is doing its part. Office of Emergency Services is doing their part. But you do have a significant part to play. The readyforwildfire.org, ready set go, the chief already alluded to. We also highly recommend you visit that website. It's a great resource. Uh, he talked about the go bag. I won't go into that, but have a plan, know your area, stay calm. Don't ignore the orders. That's a big one we have. You know, once we're, we're issuing an evacuation warning, this is a good time to think about leaving now. And when we issue an evacuation order, it's not time to say, well, I'm going to wait and see how bad it gets. I'll wait and see what the fire does. No, that's time to go now. Um, don't ignore the orders. There is a lot of assistance available for you. Uh, we have a lot of resources you can tap into. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. They're helping with pets. Uh, a lot of this stuff, information is available online. If you have livestock or you can qualify for an A class to enter a mandatory evacuation area to get uh, livestock and we can speak on that a little bit more. Uh, the notifications. So we use Placer alerts. If you scan this uh, QR code, it will take you to the website where you can sign up uh, for that. And I, we have some handouts that uh, my investigative assistant, Kristin Nanny, is here with me today. Uh, she's brought some literature for you to take before you leave that will also have that for you to sign up in. I won't go into the weeds on it, but we are working uh, with throughout the basin to create kind of a single uh, notification system where, because a lot, the question comes up, how do we notify vacationers and tourists who haven't been to these meetings and not familiar with, you know, the Placer alerts and the ready set go? And they're working on putting together a single QR code and the county border suits is also heavily involved in that to make sure this goes out to short-term rentals, make sure it's available through like the hotels, the motels, so that even the people who are visiting here can easily have the information, know who to go to to make sure they get alerted in case of an emergency. So unified command, I mentioned that. We have, basically there's two different uh, aspects to that. There's the field unified command. That's where we're car to car or we'll bring in, we have what's called a mobile command post, which is a giant RV. It was here during our training. And we just work together to work through the problems, work through the emergencies that are arising with all of our partners. And it's not just fire and law. It goes much deeper than that. It's animal control. It's, it's public utilities. It's the public utility districts, uh, because all these players become, you know, important partners in managing any type of emergency that we're dealing with. And then uh, at the higher level, there's the Placer Operational Area Emergency Operations Center. They're headquartered down in Auburn. They'll stand that up. It's always active. It's a full-time uh, organization. And as a matter of fact, just this year, the Placer Board of Supervisors authorized the sheriff to create a brand new lieutenant allocation. That's Lieutenant Ty Combers, who's our full-time assigned to the Office of Emergency Operations down there. But when we enter an emergency, it goes from just being, you know, a full-time job Monday through Friday to a twenty-four hour operation. So they're helping coordinate and uh, obtain resources for us. And I could speak to you at hours uh, about all the things that going, go on behind the scenes to help manage these emergencies, especially when they grow to significant sizes like the Angora or the King Fire, the mosquito fire. Uh, these are our emergency alert notifications. Like I mentioned, there's Placer Alert. Um, I know there were some concerns because one of the things we have is Everbridge. That's basically the landline notification when we will designate an area that we need to notify. They'll go through a landline. Well, if the, sometimes if the power has been blown out, now we're worried about getting the phone messages. Well, there's several layers of notification. Um, one is the wireless emergency alert system. That's will go, that's basically, we just draw an area and the, these notifications will go out through cell towers to saturate that area. Anybody who has a cell phone is going to get that a look. Now, cell towers can go down. They can be impacted by fire, but I can tell you, most of them all have generator backup. So they're not dependent upon the fire, but they still can be impacted directly by the fire. I just ordered an inspection of all of our radio repeaters here in the basin and that inspection was carried out about six weeks ago. And it was specifically for just defensible sticks. All of our repeaters here in the basin have generator uh, backups. So we're not dependent upon having power. I want to make sure we don't go losing in the face of an oncoming fire. And luckily for us, ours are up at the top of Pluto, Mount Genoa, they're over in Martis, they're at Cave Rock. Most of these are above the fire line to begin with. They're at the tops of mountains. And I can tell you, after our inspection, I had more concerns about them being impacted by, directly by, by fire. Um, and finally, what you're going to get during any type of emergency, emergency is us going door to door. Uh, we have an high-low siren that is installed on every one of our patrol vehicles. I, unfortunately, this, the uh, recording didn't come through with my PowerPoint, so I can't play it for you. But if anybody's been to Europe and you've heard the European car sirens that mean all kinds of sound that you'll hear in England and other European countries, that's what our high-low siren sounds like. Um, and if you hear that, it just means it's time to go. But we will be going door to door. And the fact of the matter is, is that uh, we're not leaving until you're out. So we're here and we're going to be the last people out of the area of danger. And that's something you can rely on. There's also two-on-one. So in the event of a major incident, and we're standing up shelters, two-on-one's just the number you can call. If you don't have a place to go to, like the chief mentioned, the friend's house, family's house, as part of your plan, and you actually need services for shelter, for food, OES will be standing up emergency shelters, and you can find out where those are simply by dialing two-on-one. That will only actually be during the emergency. Covered all those. Oh, temporary safe refuge. That's something the chief touched upon that is one of your great strengths. As far as the entire basin is concerned, you have one of the best temporary refuge areas in the basin. The parking lot, Palisades. You also have the golf course at the Everline. These are tremendously huge temporary refuge areas, much bigger and much more robust than a lot of them that we have designated around the basin. So that's a real strength for you. Obviously, as the chief mentioned, it's not our first go-to during an evacuation. We want you to follow the evacuation order and leave the area. In a really fast-moving fire, if evacuation routes get cut off, you guys have a really great place to take temporary refuge. Evacuation zones and mappings. I don't want to go too much into the weeds on this. There's been, if you go to the Placer County Sheriff's Facebook page, we just posted today why we don't use third-party evacuation zone software. And basically, that's these pre-designated areas where during an evacuation, they'll say we're evacuating Zone Nineteen, and that zone gets alerted, and then you can go. We found through experience and experience with our allied agency partners that they're not as effective as our own GIS, which is Geographic Information System. So during an emergency, I will be at a command post. I have access to the SART topo maps. I'll be car to car with the chief, car to car with Cal Fire, other allied agency partners. We'll be looking at the fire, because every fire is unique. And we can't give you an evacuation plan, because we would need to provide about a thousand different plans to cover a thousand different contingencies. So what we do is we go car to car and confering with the fireside at the house. We'll look at where the fire is, is at risk. We will draw our own. It takes me about thirty seconds to draw my own evacuation area, and then we do notifications that way. And we find it's much more effective and much more accurate than using a pre-planned, third-party evacuation zone software, because the big problem was being, they draw a zone, and you'll have a zone, say it's like Zone Nineteen, and their Zone Twenty is just below it, and the fire is just hitting a part of Zone Twenty. I can't just evacuate that one little part of Zone Twenty. I'll have to evacuate the whole thing, which now adds more congestion to the roads. It adds more traffic. It hampers my ability to evacuate those zones that really need to be evacuated right now. So if you want to learn more about that, I encourage you to visit our Placer County Sheriff's Facebook page, and you can actually listen to our OES and Lieutenant Ty Connors explain in-depth the reasoning behind that. Just a quick mention about contraflow. I know people have very legitimate concerns about the roadways being clogged up. We've all seen traffic coming in during ski weekends and leaving on ski weekends, and people upset for hours and that kind of traffic. But you need to understand that you're sitting in traffic for people who are obeying the motor vehicle laws. They're following the red lights, the mouse hole. They're only using one lane. During this type of emergency, we can take and shift the lanes of traffic. We create multiple lanes out. We work with our partners at CHP. We work with Cal Trans, and we've done this before. And you see this actually yourselves on the weekend, where they put the two lanes in going in in the morning, and then they shift it and do two lanes out in the evening. That's the same principle. We're just doing it on a much larger scale. Also, like, you know, we're working with our partners, like, up in Truckee, we wouldn't be stopping for the red lights. We'd be driving, reverting traffic probably most likely down west of the road as well to hit the highway, going through Truckee as well as going straight through, and we keep traffic moving. That's how we are able to evacuate a lot more people than the roadways are actually designed to handle, because they stop following the motor vehicle laws. And we have Chippies, we have Truckee CHP, we have Nevada County, all assisting us to close down roads. We keep traffic moving. You may even see that down at the bottom here at eighty-nine, where we would eliminate the ability, like, depending on the situation of the fire, you may not be able to take a right turn and leave the valley by going down through the town, so they won't keep everybody going that way. Or vice versa. We don't want you going that way. We'll push everybody going the other way. Repopulation is always a big concern, and it is honestly really complicated, because even though the sheriff has the ability to, basically, to declare repopulation, allow people back in, we don't make these decisions in the back. We have to work with our partners in fire. We have to work with the utilities, building departments, HHS, road departments, and everybody has to concur before we allow people repopulating. So I know we joined the mosquito fire. We had a lot of really frustrated residents, because the fire was basically, I wouldn't say was contained, but the majority of forest hill was safe as far as the immediate fire, and people wanted to go home, but, you know, we still had utility lines there. You know, there was both houses that had been impacted, and there were so many different considerations that took into place before the sheriff could make a decision to say, yes, we're going to begin repopulation, because the one thing we never want to do is order a repopulation and then have to go back in and try to re-evacuate everybody, because we jumped the gun. So I just ask, God forbid you're ever in a situation where you have to evacuate, and you are waiting to be repopulated, please be patient. You know, these are not arbitrary decisions, and there's a lot of boxes that have to be checked to make sure it's absolutely safe before we allow everybody back into an evacuated area. It's always our goal to get people to back home. Thank you. And just one more. That's the fire ready at placer.ca.gov, and the phone number, another reference for you guys to take, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have. If there's any online, you guys make it too easy.
They're getting hungry.
And I think the Forty-Niners are going.
I'm recording it, okay.
We do have some handouts for you guys over on the table. Please feel free before we leave today to stop by, table, write those. I apologize. I gave up. I was speaking yesterday, and I gave up the last of my cards yesterday, but I am always available. I'd love to hear from the community. You can reach me at the Placer Sheriff Office right down in Towne City at Bridge Creek, and stop by and say hi.
Thank you. And I know this is really high on people's minds. It's seventeen-twelve. San Francisco's ahead, and they are on Giants, and they are on the Giants' ten-yard line. All right. Next speaker is Kyle Truzey. I don't know your current title.
I work in politics.
He's in charge of most everything.
And I'll be very quick. Really, I just invited to speak and say a few words on behalf of Palisades Tahoe. As a community member in the valley here, for the last number of years, I think we mentioned, we've hosted evacuation drill. You know, really, we are just here to be a resource in any potential emergency. You know, the area of refuge, like we've talked about it a number of times, you know, it could be in any location, in the parking lot, could be in a parking structure, could be anywhere that's deemed the most appropriate location. We also come to the plate with a number of resources, you know, whether it be heavy equipment, or access to on-demand water, or snowmaking systems, or, you know, ski patrollers, or whatever it is, right? We've got folks around that we're always willing, at the drop of a hat, you know, these guys reach out to us. We have really good working relationships with these agencies. You know, CHP, a lot of the different groups, the county, we're ready to do what we can at the drop of a hat when the community uses us. So really, that's all I had to say, and haven't answered any questions, but hopefully not for a little while.
So I apologize for not mentioning it for you, but Palisades Tahoe has been a tremendous partner to us, and Kyle in particular has been tremendous. You know, when we set up our training up there, they made that available to us at no cost to the county. Normally, if you were trying to contract for that, it would have been pretty significant. They've always been super accommodating, and they're just a great community partner to work with.
But if it'd been in the winter, they would have charged you for parking. Okay. Also, I want to thank Palisades Tahoe, you know, all the times we've done the evacuation. They've been more than willing to help out with equipment, with people, with discussions. It's been great. But again, I think everybody's emphasized, that is not our primary evacuation area. That's our evacuation area of the last resort, right? Shelter in place means stay in your house. Doesn't mean go there. The other good advice I've actually heard on one of the webinars that people have given is, leave when the warning comes out. Don't leave when it says evacuate. So when the warning comes out, then the roads will more likely be a lot less crowded than when the evacuation order is given, because the order is go. So, I mean, everyone's been concerned about eighty-nine being clogged up and Squaw Valley Road, or sorry, Olympic Valley Road being clogged up. Probably gonna be true, right? But if you leave when the warning comes out, if you have a place to go, especially, that's the time to leave. So I thought that was great advice. Okay, so the next speaker is Dave Hunt. Oh, there he is. Dave is the chief engineer for the Public Service District.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate being here tonight. My name is Dave Hunt. I'm the district engineer for the Olympic Valley Public Service District. And first I want to say, over the past number of years, I've spent a lot of time with Chief Riley and Chisholm and Captain DeDeo and the fire crew over there, really putting a concerted effort into learning their business and how it would affect how we operate and maintain our water system. And in return, I provided information to them as to, you know, what our water system consists of. We'll go through a few slides of that today. But to me, that's been important, in charge of, you know, maintaining our assets and water supply, and learning how they do their business, and how, you know, I could provide support to that, and educating them on our water system. I think it's been a good process for me, and hopefully for them as well. And I'm sure they're tired of hearing from me sometimes. Next slide, please. We are a county water district formed in nineteen-sixty-four, service area of fifteen square miles. You can see that outlined in black. Our water and sewer service territory is essentially in the valley here. The pieces that go up and down Highway eighty-nine there, that is the fire service area. So their area is a little bit bigger than what we provide water, sewer, and garbage to. We do provide water, sewer, and garbage services, fire, and EMS, and are getting into the fuels management business. We have about eight-hundred-and-fifty water services. David will probably talk a little bit about the mutual water system. There are two water systems. Essentially, here on the valley floor, the mutual water system serves about two-hundred-and-eighty customers. We serve water to about eight-hundred-and-fifty water services, a mix of residential, commercial, multifamily, and resort commercial. So, real quickly, where does our water come from and who pumps it? We are a groundwater basin. We don't provide surface water. Nobody here does, and all the groundwater is pumped from the groundwater basin here. There's four pumpers in the basin. Us, the Olympic Valley Public Service District, like I said, we have about eight-hundred-and-fifty customers. The Squaw Valley Mutual Water Company, a municipal water supplier as well, about two-hundred-and-eighty customers. Everline Resort has three or so wells in the Golf Course Meadow area that they pump for irrigation and snowmaking. And Palisades Tahoe also has some snowmaking wells here on the valley floor, as well as above the valley floor. They have a snowmaking system too. Next, please. So just a quick overview of our water system. You see in purple is essentially our service area. In yellow is the mutuals service area. They're primarily residential. We serve a mix. It's hard to see in this here. I've tried to highlight our big facilities. I have some slides that will highlight them a little bit better, but we pump groundwater from what we call the West Basin, the West Groundwater Basin, and that is essentially just west of the meadow, and that's where all of the good water quality is and the good water quality. So we have four active production wells in the West Aquifer. We also have a small horizontal well just up here above the Everline Resort. It doesn't pump very much. It's actually a natural gravity flow. It really depends on the moisture in the mountain as it's drawing from the bedrock, but it could pump anywhere from fifteen to, you know, twenty-five or thirty gallons per minute. It's a good non-energy water source for us. We have three water storage tanks. I'll talk about those a little bit more. They serve, each of those serves a specific pressure zone. So our system is broken into three pressure zones, and we have supply and tanks to those pressure zones to make sure that we maintain a municipal water supply in each of those zones, as well as a fire supply to each of those zones. Our primary zone is Zone One, which is that lighter purple, and then we have a smaller pressure zone, two and three, which basically encompasses the Everline area, and then the Sierra Crest Trail subdivision just up above Everline. We have a couple booster pump stations in there, and then we have just a network of pipelines ranging in size to transport that water. We have fire hydrants all over the place to provide fire, firewater, and those basically draw from our system and from storage. Next slide, please. So a little bit closer view of our district water sources. You could see in the center of the screen there, Wells One-R, Two-R, Three-R, and Five-R. Those are our primary production wells. We're pumping those every day. Those pump up to our Zone One tank, which just sits up above the Olympic Village Inn up there. That's our primary storage facility, and these are our primary water supplies. These wells basically turn on when the tank level tells them to turn on. So when water is being used, it drops the water levels in the tank, and then when it reaches a level, it communicates via our remote control systems and tells these wells to turn on. So they're constantly filling the tank and providing water to the system. You can see the horizontal well down there in the lower right. I talked about that. That's just a gravity feed, and it feeds into our Zone Two. And then I did highlight well eighteen-three R. That's a two-hundred-gallon-per-minute well. That's in what we call the Meadow or the East Aquifer. That well eventually become an important component of our system, but that well, the Everline Resort and Spa is required under an agreement we have with them to dedicate that well to us, even when they start to develop Phase Two of their project. So that will provide us some further redundancies as the East and West Aquifer are as well-connected, and it provides us some redundancy as to where we can pump. Next, please. Tanks and booster pump stations. I talked about three pressure zones. Each pressure zone has a tank. Our West tank is our largest tank, one-point-one-five million gallons, located up above Olympic Village Inn, and that gets its water supplied from our four vertical wells, like I said, in the main well field, and that provides Zone One, which basically extends all the way to seven-eleven here and Bridge Three. Those are our last customers on Zone One. So it encompasses, you know, most of our connections. Zone Two, or what we call the East Tank, is a five-hundred-thousand-gallon tank that was built back in the eighties to support the development of the resort of Squaw Creek, and that gets its water from what we call the East Booster Pump Station. East Booster Pump Station robs water from the West Tank, and it pumps water up to our East Tank, and then a very small Zone Three Tank that serves the residential development along Sierra Crest Trail. It's about a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand gallons, and we have a small booster pump station there on Sierra Crest Trail, which takes water out of the East Tank and then pumps it up. We also have the ability to run backwards with that. We can run water through pressure-reducing valves from Zone Three into Zone Two, and then from Zone Two into Zone One. So a pretty well-rounded system. We have lots of redundancies in how we can move water. We have lots of redundancies in the amount of water we can move, and so that, next slide, please. And that brings me to sort of the discussion that I got invited here to talk about, and that's the reliability of our system. We have reliabilities in a number of fashions. First one here is well-field redundancy. And so there's a requirement. It's a state requirement. You have to meet the maximum water demand. In other words, the maximum peak water demands for a day, usually irrigation in July, with the largest with the largest well out of service. So we have to be able to meet peak demands, let's say with our well five R at a service, right? So we, we more than are able to meet our maximum water demands with our largest well out of service. We have a lot of redundancy in the supply that we have. We have more supply or more source than, than we have demand at this point. So we're in pretty good shape there. Next slide. Very important, especially in the event of a fire, is backup power. And we have emergency backup power sources for all of our water system facilities, whether they're in the form of stationary generator or portable trailer mounted generators. And that provides us the opportunity to run all our systems in the event of a power, power outage. At our main well, which is in the parking lot there up at the Palisades, we have a generator that can provide power to all four of our drinking water wells. It is sized as such. We have backup power at this facility here, three oh five Olympic Valley Road, that provides backup power to our east booster pump station, like I said, which provides water to zone two. And then just a few months ago, we secured a brand new trailer mounted generator that could be brought up to our zone three booster pump station, quickly plugged in and provide backup power to that so that we can get water up to the uppermost portions of our system. Next slide. This is super important, our storage capacity. Our storage capacity is, is very robust. We have one point one seven five million gallons of storage between our three water storage tanks. And this far exceeds state standards for how you size water storage tanks. Water storage tanks have sort of three components to them. They have a municipal water supply component, which is an operating storage, which is usually an average day demands worth of storage. There's a component for emergency municipal supply. The largest component of a water storage tank is for fire supply. And we calculate that based on fire code requirements. Essentially, you know, probably sixty to seventy percent of our water storage tanks are, have dedicated or sized storage for, for fire supply. We have far more storage than the regulatory requirement and far more than industry standard. So we're in really good shape with our water storage capabilities. Next, please. This is important as well, the supervisory control and data acquisition or our SCADA system. We are not a twenty-four hour manned facility. We have operators that are on call twenty-four seven. And we work normal workdays here. And our operators are on call on the weekends and on holidays and after hours. But we have the full capability of monitoring and controlling our water system remotely. So we can start and stop pumps. We could, we could view trends and see how fast tanks are, are filling or draining and really sort of assess and operate our system. It's a very state-of-the-art system, we're constantly upgrading that and keeping it up to snuff. But this is an extremely crucial portion of our system, our SCADA system, which allows us to operate, maintain, monitor our system without being here in the valley. Next slide, please. Finally, what good are assets if you don't take care of them and have the money to replace them? And we have a very aggressive capital replacement and capital improvement planning process. So there, there's two, two components to our financial planning as far as our drinking water assets go. And one is a capital replacement plan, which is just that. It, it covers costs to repair and replace existing assets. And that is funded through our rates. And then there's a capital improvement plan and that's construction of new assets. We don't construct new assets very often, but we have some projects on the books here that are going to bring some new assets into our system. And that is funded through the water and sewer connection fees that we collect from development, whether it be remodels or new residential development or commercial development or whatnot. But those are, those are the two plans that we have. Next, please. Our capital replacement plan, we, we do what's called budget forecasting. And this is a process where we look a hundred years into the future. We assess the value of every single asset that we own, we assign a value to it based on when it was put in the ground. We assign a date where it theoretically would need to be replaced. And that drives our budget process. How much money do we need to put away every year? So that we have funds available when these capital replacements are needed. And we're not inducing rate shock to cover a big project. And we don't have a need for borrow. We do not borrow to operate and maintain our water system. We do not have any capital financing. So our capital replacement fund makes sure that we have dollars available to fund this. Next, please. Capital improvement plan, like I said, it is funded by connection fees. And that page over there to the left, it's really hard to see, but this is sort of the budgeting process that we go through every year. And really dedicate, pull out of that capital replacement plan or what we actually need to do, a five-year window of projects. And those, those are what we identify and assign dollar values to and when we need the money. And, and so that it's there for us when we need it. And we could do projects when we need to without having to finance those. That's all I have, I'll take any questions.
I hear we've got great water.
We do.
Yes.
We've got great water.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Have the metal improvement, Palisades increased the depth of coating capacity of our water resources underground?
Those projects are sort of downstream of our main well field per se. They, they haven't had a very visible effect on our current water supply. And I'm not sure exactly how they've affected the, you know, Everline's wells in the, in the meadow. I'm not sure. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so as you mentioned, there are actually two water districts. And the other one is a cooperative water, water district, which is the mutual water company. And it's the, basically encompasses the older residential area, the original Paulson grand property. And so it's Olympic Valley Road and Lanny and Sandy and, you know, the family names going vertically. Eric and William in those things. So talking about that will be the treasurer of the mutual water district, which is Richard.
Three slides, but we're going to be home soon. So this is a map of our system. It was highlighted in yellow in Dave's presentation. And I'm going to go from bottom to top, left to right. So we have two wells at the bottom. You know, one of them is in the little shack in the parking lot, you see it there. The other one is well two, there's a picture of it there, which is right a few feet east on the edge of the golf course. Well one in the inside of the wellhouse also has our SCADA system, which is similar. It's a different, a different vendor, but it's that same concept as the PSD's remote control and monitoring. I have a picture there of the, of the pumps, if you want to look at it. We also have a generator in the back room, you know, so you see the door there in the bottom right picture. That's there for backup, electric backup generator. Those are two wells and I'll go straight to the top in orange. You see we have two tanks. Top left, we have a, an upper large tank, which is a high pressure. Tank supplies a high pressure zone, which is at the top of the map. And it's a few feet away from a lateral well that supplies a lot of water for us during the winter and into fall, into the spring. And there's a lower, smaller tank, a few feet east of there, you see the circle there. And like all water systems, there's a tangle going on between the, how much water the tanks have and how much pumping goes up the hill from the pumps to replenish and so forth. And that's all control monitored by the SCADA system and of course with human supervision. We have, top right, we have fifty-four hydrants that we supply. Many of them were installed during the first phase of the construction that upgraded our pipes from ancient breaking down technology, materials and pipes into the new. And the last thing I want to show that is pertinent today, which is those two green squares, the PSD and us are in the planning process, getting ready to start construction in twenty twenty-four of an emergency intertie system that will allow us to supply water to them and vice versa. Because of the technologies and different things, there's two different points. The top right square provides water from our system to theirs. And the bottom left corner is where they supply this water to us. This is most likely scenario of the necessity to do these interties during fire emergencies, although it's also a case of failure. If a pipe breaks and one of the operators needs water because their tanks and the pumps can't supply it and we buy water from the other one. That intertie will have some tie into the SCADA systems as well. So they can operate and be activated remotely without having to have human operators on the ground. So in case of emergency, this is obviously important because the operator may have to do fifty-seven thousand things at that moment. And we don't want important things like interties or backup generators, et cetera, to be affected by the lack of manpower because of the emergency. So again, this is a snapshot of our system. Two more slides. Reliable water supply for firefighting, I'm not going to talk about the system. We had our annual meeting a few weeks ago and some total of four people showed up. But minutes are on the website, you want to hear about what happened, you can see it there. But for today, pertinent to this discussion today is that in three weeks, we will have finished replacing all water, main water pipes in our system. Started a decade ago for phase one, phase two was started what, two, three years ago? And it'll be over no later than October fifteen. And David, are we on track to be on time? Yes. Paving an L. The good news of this, for this conversation is that we expect to have reliable for the event of an emergency, day to day as well, the reliable water supply at high pressure. The old pipes that we have replaced probably have failed under, many of them would have failed under these circumstances. That's behind us. At the lower tank, which is up above, we have a booster pump that allows it to supply water to the high pressures tank up above. So again, there's a tangle between the two in terms of supplying all the water people, which I'm not. Figure this out and it all works and it's true and tried technology. So there's nothing new in there, so there are key, and this is just all. Water engineering principle has been around longer than probably anyone in this room. We have backup generators, the third bullet, both at the wellhouse. And we are, we just purchased and took delivery of a little piece of equipment, a few thousand dollars, but it's an automatic transfer switch that allows us to transfer power from the grid to the, to the generator without human intervention. Again, the goal is to be able to do this remotely, not only because of personnel may have to do many things, but the personnel may not even be in the valley because of lack of access. So we're installing that this month, right? I mean, this thing is here, so we have it on time. And the last bullet, which I already mentioned, is the planned emergency intertie with the PSD, which will be adding reliability to the water supply. And the construction begins in twenty twenty-four. The PSD has taken fantastic things off because we have no capacity or knowledge to get this plating done. But they're getting, well, planning them with pretty astute experienced consultants in this business. And this will be construction in twenty twenty-four. I mean, barring anything, I don't think it's going to take that long because the construction is, what needs to be constructed is simple, but nonetheless, things they time. But I suspect it will start and finish in twenty twenty-four. And the last slide, before we can go to dinner, is emergency response. We have, at the mutual water company, we've implemented a back office and front office and operating improvements over the past couple of years. And just so you know, by the way, my day job is of a big, deep computer nerd. So I've automated a lot of the processes and made it simpler. We used to have four databases of customers. And as you know, A, knowing where they were and B, they were, all of them were wrong and not a C. Now we have one single contact database. It's a painful process to get our members to respond. It's in their best interest, but they still, but surely fill the database with correct information, contact, emergency information and so forth. And that's in the cloud, so we don't have to rely on a system that will be in a building like this or someone's home, which is where it used to be. Now it's all cloud-based, can be operated from anywhere in the universe, what the world. Auto distribution messages, again, in back office, we ensure that we have simple email communication, sometimes it's messaging, mostly email. So when emails are sent to these group email addresses, at least three people, always no less than three people get it. So it's not relying on someone on vacation, sick, unavailable. So three people get it and we all have a protocol internally as to who takes care of what and what priority. So one or two, or if one or two people are unavailable, there's always a third one. In some cases, it's five people, certainly for the very important things like service issues. We have five people in the distribution list. We have the remote monitoring control system that has been in place for ten years, has been partially implemented. But now we're in the final push of getting it all fully operational and in place. And it's cloud-based, one difference from the PSD for reasons that I have, was not involved with, although I probably would have gone with the cloud-based because of my background, allows us to access this anywhere in the world. So there's no, if, if we were to have the server in the shack and the shack goes out of business because of flood or fire, then there is no SCADA. This is, it doesn't protect everything. You still need the electronics on the ground, but at least you have some visibility, again, from a browser anywhere in the world. Our water system operator, some Reno and Carson City, that's a point of vulnerability, but there's nothing we can do about it because there is no, I mean, we have scoured the earth to find people that are local who can operate our system and we haven't found them. So they're Reno and Carson City, that's a point of vulnerability. But unfortunately, there is categorically nothing we can do unless we get lucky enough to find someone who's closer to Olympic Valley to be an operator for the system. They're fantastic people. One of them used to be, worked for the PSD. He led the PSD and he used to be, among other things, was fully responsible for our system. When the PSD contracted operations and maintenance to the PSD, we're lucky enough to get him. But he's in Reno as parks, which is entirely Reno, but that's it. And we have emergency contact, the phone numbers monitored twenty-four seven. And we periodically do a test call from a number that they will recognize and call our ID to see if it works. You know, like, let's call it the phantom shoppers that go help it with, you know, see the retail stores out, we do that. And we have a, an email address, you see it there, and service is one of those email addresses that gets redistributed all nightly. Every time someone goes there to more than three people, that's the one that, you receive like five people all over the place because we have distributed operations. David gets it, I get it, and three of our O and M operators get them. One of us is Reno, the other one is in Modesto, the other one is, you know, in Tracy. And the other one is, I don't even know where he is. But at least we're all involved, so we know what to do. And with that all said, that's the last slide. Oh, shout out.
Quick question. On that end of the valley, is the typical residence water pressure based on gravity or based on pumps?
I don't know. Gravity.
That's what I thought. She seems reliable during a fire. If there's a small fire, I might try to put on the hose or pressure washer or whatever.
Yeah. But yeah, that's why there, the tanks are, there are two tanks and same thing with the public service district. Our tanks are different levels, so the higher the tank, the higher the pressure. So our two, our two tanks are up above the Squaw Summit. Oh, up above the Squaw Summit Development.
Okay.
All right. So if you go up past Navajo, there's a road that goes through it.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Right, and we're, we're in the process now.
That's, that's Summer Lane right there.
Yeah.
So that, that, the, the street is ends and then you, you have a little gravel path to the first tank and then another gravel path to the second tank.
And we're in the process now of replacing the main line that goes up to that tank by pushing it through the streets of the Squaw Summit Development.
That's all we do on this end of the valley.
Yeah. Yes, sir.